Anderson.
Mayor.
Gab.
Here.
Stuki.
Yes.
Flajay.
Here.
Good.
Eric.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda by the motion.
Second. Anderson.
Yes.
Gab.
Yes.
Stuki.
Yes.
Flajay.
Yes.
Good.
Item 1.3, approval of the January 6, 2021 meeting minutes by the motion.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gab.
Yes.
Yes.
Flajay.
Yes.
Good.
Section 2, public participation in introduction of the address. Section 2.1 for item 2.1, the SEA report. The SEA. Item 2.2, these were classified employees association stores. SEA. No. I believe we have our prearranged speaker this evening. Item 2.4, anybody in the audience would like to do a presentation? Okay. Section 3, convening for work session, item 3.1, which is another public participation on items we'll be discussing on the works in the work session or discuss anything on the work session. Okay. And now we're at item 3.2, which is the PI levy presentation, and we're going to interview Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Good, President of the Board, and members of the board. Just making sure that this thing is still accurate. So. So, permanent improvement levy. At the last board meeting, we did the first of two actions that it takes for the board to go onto the ballot for May of 2021. So, this is kind of a down and easy format. What are we asking for exactly? It is a 2-mill continuous permanent improvement levy. Permanent improvement levy is the main point that I want to emphasize here. Yes, it's continuous, but because it's a permanent improvement fund, none of our buildings or facilities are going away. So, it's always going to have to have some level of upkeep. What's important about a permanent improvement levy is it can only, the funds that are in the permanent improvement fund can only be used for capital improvements, projects, maintenance, repair of school property, and certain equipment items, but they have to be designed to go five years or more. So. What it will not be used for is salaries or benefits. This is for stuff, things that we have to do to keep these buildings nice. So, what will it be used for? Safety and security enhancements. A lot of our cameras and other items that I don't want to get too far into the weeds with need some dramatic upkeep. We're in analog systems, which are not always the best. Buses fall into this category. Nineteen of our buses in our current fleet have exceeded the useful life by either age, by mileage, or both. Okay, 12 years and 180,000 miles is kind of our benchmark that we look at. Textbooks. Our adoptions into textbooks are always at least five years in length. I would imagine we have some that are beyond that by quite a ways. Technology upgrades. It never has that been more prevalent than this year, but make no mistake, the technology needs are not going to get smaller as we move into the future. Maintenance and upkeep of school buildings, not just buildings, but any facility, anything that we have here. We have estimated a million square footage of buildings and structures. Okay? A million square feet. Any potential future building add-ons can be financed through this project. And I say that May because we're really watching how our numbers are. We just got back our most recent, I haven't even had a chance, came in this afternoon, I believe. So, I haven't had a chance to really study the new enrollment figures, but if it were to indicate that we would need to maybe add on, most of the buildings we've built here over the years have been buildings you could add a couple of rooms to if you needed to, if that were the right answer. But it can be done through this process and through a permanent improvement fund. So, that's why my carrot there is based on growth. We start seeing this movement. Yes, we see houses going up, but it doesn't always equate to kids in, kids out kind of thing. So, that's why we rely on the enrollment projections. HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, windows, fixtures. I have no way to tell you how much we got in parking lots and roads and in all the buildings, but it's a lot. And if some of them are degraded, so you have to get into some type of regular rotation to be able to keep those parking lots and roadways in good shape. Anything district grounds related, extracurricular, co-curricular facilities and those of the like, all fit into that big category of capital improvement projects. So, why is it so important? It's important because of the investment we have all made in these schools. You live in this community, you're paying taxes, you've made this great investment into the school district, into all these facilities. They're not cheap. But just like any homeowner, you have to be able to take care of your property. You know, something fails, something goes awry, something is used. These buildings are used constantly, as you know. If that kid go through whatever it is, these buildings are used, you know? I won't say 24/7 because that's not quite accurate, but they're used a good portion of them all day and evening. This permanent improvement is a set aside. It cordons off that money so it can't be used for anything else. We need that to really be sound in our approach fiscally as we move forward. The District and Communitywide Facilities Committee, which has been meeting quite a few years, identified over $30 million in facility needs. And I'm not talking about warrants, things that we need to have, talking about stuff that we need to deal with within a 10-year period of time. Some are like right on us, some we know are going to happen. Roofs. Roofs are not cheap, not with this size of buildings. So, those kind of items, you have to start planning for. And a permanent improvement fund allows you to do so. It stops that heavy drain on our operating fund, our general fund. Sometimes we use those interchangeably, and they are. Okay, that's the big fund, okay, that impacts students directly in the classroom. There's a direct correlation to funding that way. Nearly, it's 89 and change, nearly 90% of the school districts in Ohio have a permanent improvement fund. Springbrough is not part of that, 90%. We're part of the 10% that does not have one. That's not something we want to brag about. It's something we need to correct, and the reason is it just makes sense to take care of our stuff. Now, the side benefit of all of this is it's going to be able to push the need for new operating dollars and additional funds down the road and away from a pandemic that we're all experiencing and all the economic hardships for some people that we're all going through, that the communities, not just here, but all around the country and the world for that fact. And it's just the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do in terms of our taxpayers and our schools, our kids and our staff. It's the right thing to do. So, let's get down to the big stuff. What's this going to cost me? How much is it going to increase my taxes? Short answer is zero. It's a net zero. Yep, that's what I said. Well, how much if my home is worth $250,000, what's the net increase in my taxes? This particular situation, the net result will be zero. Well, what if my home's worth $500,000? Zero. $750,000. Oh, I got a big house. I don't, but somebody does. Zero. And I say that, and how is it possible? The ballot language will show an increase of 2 mills, which if passed, if I say May 2021, it will begin to collect January 1 of the following calendar year. Okay? So, 2 mills will show on the ballot because that's the vote, okay? What the ballot does not show is that by timing it up this year, it's critical that we understand that at the same time, the exact same time, 2 mills are going to drop off of a bond issue that's paying for this building here. 2 mills on, 2 mills off. That's how we get to the net zero. Now, that part won't be in the ballot language because it can't legally. Okay, but we have, well, Tara has to talk here, a couple of times a year to get our tax budgets approved by our county auditor, and he's verified it is 2 mills that will drop off January 1, 2022. Okay? 2 mills on, 2 mills off, exact same moment. Zero net increase in your property tax as a result of this. So, when's it going to be on the ballot? The exact date is May the 4th of 2021. And that kind of concludes all of this.
No, we captured everything. I think it will be very important in our messaging for people to understand the 2 mills coming off and taxes coming at the same time. So, we'll just have to make sure that we're communicating that so people understand that. The county auditor also said he's open to anyone question or anything, they can go to re-call him and explain as well how the process works.
And that's from the board.
What's the value of a mill these days? Like, how much revenue will that generate?
It's, well, for the 2 mills.
2 mills.
Just about $2.8 million with our 5 mills. So, right now it's $1,359,850,470. So, that's just for the outside.
So, it does come fairly close to covering what was identified in facilities task force, that 30 million over 10 years of units.
That'd be about $3.2 million a year, so it is.
Is that what it works out? Yeah, so it's close.
Very close.
But it's not.
Doesn't get us quite there.
Not all over there, yeah, which is, I guess, the one way that we felt it was important to have it be a net no increase. So, it doesn't cover all the items that were covered, but it does get us a good deal of the way there.
Absolutely.
Let me clarify that. I just need to make sure it got in my head. So, of that amount, this isn't replacing money that we've already spent, like, it's already in the budget, but this would be above and beyond. So, how would it cover some of those things we identified?
So, we have the ability with that where we can pull some of the things that are currently being paid for out of the general fund, some of our buses, some of our capital needs, we can pull some of those items out while also identifying some of the items that were in the 32 million. Some of those $32 million are already built since the 5-year, we have textbooks, we have lost leases. So, there's some things that are already built since the 5-year. So, it's not going to cover everything else, but it will be able to pull some of those items out of the general fund and then also allow them to set up a 10-year facilities plan to start tackling some of the items that were within that plan that were currently unmet needs in all the 5-year forecasts in the past that I presented. We've always had a long list of unmet needs. Some of those unmet needs will now start to be able to be done.
Wait, just clarifying. It is incremental money to the school in the sense that the money we're collecting on the 2 mills right now is going to pay for law, to pay for this liability. So, now you're collecting that, and we're able to use it for these.
Right, I understand the difference. So, in our 5-year forecast, because the 2 mills was dropping off, that's not accounted for?
I don't know how the bond or how, like, how is that counted?
The bond started on our 5-year forecast.
It's not on our 5-year forecast. So, this would be incremental. It's a prior year because now we can use it.
Correct. The 5-year forecast is just the general fund. No other funds are incorporated into the 5-year forecast. So, that's why you don't normally see that side of it.
So, with this, with 2 dropping off and picking up 2, would it have any impact on your property tax? Or is everything, like, if you pay $600 now in 2021, in 2022, it'll still be $600?
For that, for that piece, yes.
That, yeah, these.
Absolutely.
Obviously, other things hit your property tax.
Value of the building.
Other, other.
Yeah, the value of your housing.
And the things that, yes, this particular thing.
But this action is not going to result in it. But everything else stayed the same?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
There were some questions about that, and I thought that that was correct, but I just wanted to know.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Any other comments from the board?
No. I'll say it again. We, this does not mean that, and I don't know when, but in the future, this school district will need to bolster its operating funds. So, this, I just don't want to sit, I may not be sitting here, I may, but two or three years from now, when we need a levy for operating funds, make sure these kids have everything they need. We've been behind for so long. Now, this is a great catch-up, and it's great that it's zero effect, but we're still going to need operating funds in the future.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Good news is it kind of pushes it down the road a little bit, gets us away from the pandemic, gets us away from this.
I like, I like, I like that it gets us away from this pandemic tour we can, because we have a lot of problems out here, but if he was here, we have a lot of needs. So, and I like that you, for the first time, you can have a set amount. Rob, this is your, this is your budget. This is, we've got to make the, hey, the best use of what we have, and then the general fund is another thing. So, it's all, all good. We're just going to need more funds later.
So, to Charles' point, I agree with you. Are, when will you be able to kind of share out that long-term progression that we talked about, like, at work session, where that's for those that are concerned? Because this is not going to build us a building, so it's not going to deal with the class size concerns, that type of thing. Where will we, when will we be able to have that for the long term, since this is kind of kicking it down the road a little bit, but we still have a lot that needs to be addressed?
Well, I think a couple of things. Number one, we haven't made the decision as to the type of operating issue that we would be running. In the event of it being, let's say, an emergency levy, you don't have to run that as early because it collects immediately the next calendar year, starts to begin the collection where, say, you did an income tax. Now, you better get out in front of that at least nine, you know, a year and a half, you know, and sometimes two, depending on how collections go, but they've always said as a standard, a year and a half to get out in front of those because collections are slower, they're done by quarters, you know? So, there's a couple of, depends on the level you go. So, you know, you can, this could be five years down the road, and if it's an emergency levy, I'm not going to say it is exactly at that point, or it could be a little earlier if it were to go a different type.
I understand that, the difference with the levies, but what is our plan of, we still have issues we have to address. So, how we approach it, if we have to do it two years ahead to get it here or one year, I understand that with the difference with the levies, but when are we going to have that plan that by this year, we?
I think we need to address, I think we need to ask our people, our community, what it is they would like.
But that's what we did in our financial, in our building. I mean, we did a year and a half of community input, so we have that piece. I guess in order to sell this, it's great that there's no increase, but I think we have to tell that bigger story of how we're going to address the other things, and it's going to cost money, to Charles' point. We're going to have to have a new money levy at some point.
I feel like we talked about this earlier in the year.
We did.
We talked about this as probably a three-phased approach. We're going to deal with the PI piece, then we need to deal with operating, and then we need to deal with long-term, you know, buildings, like, you know, how our building's going to actually last, or does it make sense to look at something else? I think definitely, depending on the outcome of the May, how this works, I won't be able to do that for the May forecast, but by the November forecast, we should have, we'll have a solid by-state budget for the next two years, as long as they know nothing else happens in the kind of this year. We'll know what the outcome for the next two years, that will look like. We should know what the outcome of negotiations look like. We'll have the outcome hopefully of the levy here will look like. So, by November, we should have a better idea of what we're looking at in terms of our cash balances for the next five years so that we can really start to determine what type of operating levy would make the best sense and when. So, we should know that by November, and we'll also know about our value increase and we'll have a better idea of what our triangle update will look like as well. So, November should be a forecast that we can actually start to make some of those future decisions off of.
I'm just concerned because that doesn't help us for the May levy, though. Like, even if we can, what's now 2021, if we can say between these years, this is what we're, because I remember those three phases, and I don't know what they are right now, but it did address, I don't remember if it was the second or the third phase, of those different issues, and I think that those are some of the questions that people are going to have. It's great that there's not an increase, but we really didn't resolve any of the issues that are at hand. I mean, we're moving our money, but we can now use it for buildings, but we still have a lot over here, and I think people want to hear that, some might not, but I think a lot of people want to know what is the plan to deal with these issues? Because this just didn't cost us any more money and kept a level of money coming in.
I think you can do that, but I think you risk confusing people if you, if we just, if we, if we put this out here, here's what we're going to do. We have the tools for the 5-year forecast. All I wanted, all I wanted to be able to say is that there are a lot of other needs. Elementary school, there's, I mean, we've done a lot of great things. The committees have done a lot of great things. They're not going away. They're still sitting there. Nobody, we're not going to forget about them, but we need to concentrate on this first. Did this, get through this, and then come the end of next year, beginning of '22, that's when, in my opinion, that's when we start talking about, here's, here's what we, we need to have conversations about the future.
I just think these things are going to come up January through May, though. That's, if we don't have a response at all, because we do have some plans.
But I didn't think, did the facilities go beyond the 30 million? I didn't think.
No, nobody did it.
All the way down to, like, we would redo Clear Creek. I didn't think they went.
Well.
They had options for the future.
I'm just saying, I don't think we have.
We did have discussions, and there was.
We chatted. There was some discussion, but I don't think.
And we were all supposed to come together with the two committees to work through, which we didn't.
That's all I'm saying, right? I don't think it's done, is all I'm saying.
But I think we have a lot working at this to show the community, we do have a plan. We don't know exactly, but we do, because I remember us saying a concern that some of the plan is, like, those of us with kids, like, our kids, they just aren't going to see the benefit of the new buildings because it's going to be at this point. That's unfortunate, but it is what it is, and I think just to show that we do have some plans, and there's going to be tweaking and massaging throughout, but to just not address it or be able to answer it when a community member asks is a concern. So, that's where I would just like that big picture.
A bigger picture. We also talked about the people that are going to ask about Clear Creek, for example, aren't even, I mean, in other words, they're coming. So, so you just take, I think you take things in the order and the manner they're presented because we need those people here because they're going to be affected by something like that. So, I think the whole thing is that, you know, this board has spent a lot of time and effort and administration in doing just that, you and I coming to those meetings once a month, and other people too, but, I mean, it's, it's in, it's in the process. I just don't want us to, just because we're doing this, I don't want us to take something that's this big, and now we got to get it in here for May, because I think that confuses people. I think this is a good first step, number one. And we always, sometimes we forget about this pandemic that's going on. I know they don't forget about it, but, but I like, that's the first time I've seen that up there. I think that's a great point. Get through this pandemic, and we'll come out here during hopefully more normal time to have conversations about growth in the future and together with exactly what are we planning for, how many more kids will we have? And you're right, I see houses going up south of town, but that doesn't.
Doesn't always equate, and to.
So.
We call them buds and seeds, but it doesn't always equate to that exact same thing, so.
But I agree, we got an elementary school, something to be done at some point in time, but I don't think it's right now.
Well, we had talked about the three-phase approach and taking it, you know, because of where we're at, the most sensible thing to do was to go after the, to capture this 2-mill drop of the 2-mill replacement there so we could get a permanent improvement fund. That was kind of the first thing. The second phase would push now the need for an operating issue down the road, and then we had a third phase that could be anywhere from seven to 11 years, where we're going to capture three more mills off the tax duplicate. And at that point in time, and that, we're going to start seeing, is our population really impacting the school or not? Is it something we want to replace, change, restructure? But I think those, so we have three kind of distinct phases, you know? So, a major building project wouldn't be probably on the table for seven years, is when the first millage, one mill drops off, and then there's another mill that drops off, and the third mill that drops off five years after. So, between seven and 12, right? But that would be a great time if we felt, but staying, and I'm not saying this is the right dynamic, what is it Clear Creek, is it, what is it? What is it you want to do? Do we reassign grain levels to different parts of the district? And all could be, that's all part of that third-phase discussion that we've got to get into, and we've got to be able to watch. get into and we've got to be able to watch for some time what our enrollment growth is really, really doing to us. So, but we do have a couple of early aged buildings and that may, that may be a necessity, but not today.
Is a permanent, a permanent forever?
Yes.
Like, once this is on, it'll always be on, it doesn't probably?
Yes. Which, and the, and the, and the rationale obviously is the buildings aren't going away. So whether it's a new building that comes online and we have to take care of, or we have to keep doing, I'm taking care of these buildings. So we have a lot of capital dollars invested in this district that we have to be able to take care of. And we can't, you can't keep taking it out of the general fund. It's just, it's bleeding, it's just bleeding. So that's.
My name's Tom Smith. If anyone close to me, name and address. And address, 30 Artisan Court, Springboro, Ohio, 45066. Working on a steering committee, levy committee again, year 25. Started this because of Charles' fault. He started this with me in 1998, '97. So I think I still have the five-year forecast in there. We have a great opportunity to work with you and the, the finance committee we set up where we take on a finance budget. So, you know, it was funny that 25 years ago, the board was sitting here talking about the, or stepping the bond. Twenty-five years ago, I didn't even know what the heck that meant. I'm like, okay, sounds okay to me. But now, the building we've built and expanded upon, and we got a great opportunity to take what was set aside, set motion 25 years ago and take advantage of this two-mill drop-off and put it in a bucket where we can spend it strictly on our facilities and our kids and our textbooks, which nobody's really going to see because everybody focuses on the five-year forecast that everybody sees in the public. And it's important because you don't get these opportunities. We've been struggling since, back since I moved here. The fact that early budgets had house bill, 312, emergency reserve fund, it was like you had to pull 3% or something like that. And it's still not enough. So I hope everybody gets, is encouraged by this. It doesn't matter if you're old, young, new, not here, get one shot like this. You can't, can't miss it. We've been trying catch up my whole time in Springboro. So I hope the public gets that. You'll get your other buildings, the other ones will get fixed and happen, but you got to take advantage of that opportunity when you get it. So, so I'm here helping out. Hopefully, everybody else will give a message and it's, it's a great part of the community.
Okay. In closing, yeah, I, I think it's been said several times, I mean, this is a step in the right direction. It's not the step, it won't be the only step, but again, it's a, it's a good opportunity. I think it's the right one given the economic conditions and just where we are right now is a, you know, a community, state, country. But again, it is one of those opportunities that unfortunately we only get basically every half decade right now. So, you know, I'm fully supportive of it and I think it's the right thing to do for, for our district and kind of push us ahead into, you know, kind of with the majority of our peers in the state, you know, we're, we're a little behind the times on this, so fully supportive. So thank you, Mr. Hook. Item 3.3, committee reports, and we have diversity and inclusion committee reporting out today.
I think that's, since our last report, just we met a couple of weeks ago, kind of as a committee, looked at the idea of bringing in a outside facilitator to kind of help us through the whole process. I've interviewed one, I've got two more interviews this week with, one tomorrow and I believe one Thursday. Some of the people that I've talked to are pretty busy. They finally got back in. So we have scheduled times to have a conversation and see their availability, and then we'll bring that back kind of to the committee and kind of see where we're at. If there's a cost involved, what that is and all of, you know, what they feel like they can help. Sometimes when you get into these, you know, an area of like diversity, inclusion, or sometimes you see it in strategic planning, it's really good to bring in somebody that really, that's what they do. And that's kind of their, their, their lane, so to speak, and help us have the conversations that we need to have. And so that's kind of where it's at right now. We have agreed to meet right now monthly. It's a little bit of a hindrance yet because of the pandemic, to get people on, some on virtual, some in person. It's a little clunky at times, but, you know, we're making do with that. So it's, it's progressive. If anybody else wants to add anything, feel free to, but I'm just going to say, I mean, I, I think there was a lot of support in the last, the last meeting to maybe look at somebody to help guide us through this and sort of figure out as we go. And so, you know, hopefully after maybe you've had some of those conversations, it sounds like you're having the remaining ones this week, the three of us can, can get back together to kind of debrief and, and go over some of those options that would be helpful.
I agree. I've heard a positive. Jamie made a recommendation of something they're doing at the city diversity committee or whatever mayor's committee.
Mayor's advisory.
Thank you. And it was encouraging us to connect with somebody else that is on the committee that we don't know. And I've heard some really just in touching base with a couple of people that I work with, just some really neat conversations, which I think that's a good thing for us because diversity looks very different for all of us that are part of the committee. So I appreciate that challenge. I think that it was a great idea just to learn more about the people that we're serving alongside on the committee. And I agree, we do need the facilitators, so I'd love to hear your feedbacks. I think we've got great names of who we're talking to, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Item 3.5, any other business?
No, there's no singing and dancing involved. It's sadly, if there's, if we were not dealing with a pandemic, you know, our goal was to have some kids come in and, you know, it's kind of neat for board members to see kids and, you know, at a board meeting, but it's just kind of a challenge right now. But January, although we're moving out of January, there's board recognition month in Ohio, and I just want to mention that school board members are citizens whose decisions affect our children. And what they learn, who will teach them, what kinds of facilities house their classrooms, these are the people that are elected to establish the policies that provide the framework for our public schools. And they represent you and they take this responsibility seriously, I can assure you. Whether you agree with everything or not, they care. That I can, I can attest to. So if your staff, students of our school are asking any citizen of Springboro, take a moment. Next time you're out, the Kroger's or Roosters or any of ours, or just outing, you happen to bump into Mr. Good's or Mr. Anderson or Mr. Stuckey, Mr. Bellage or Mrs. Bad, take a, take a moment to say thank you. Okay? They're not, they're not making a lot of money, trust me. That's not why they're doing this. And I think it's important that they under, that you, they know from you that you care, that, that you're, you're grateful for the sacrifices they've done for all of our children. So on my behalf, I certainly want to, I certainly think I speak for Tara as well and the other members here, thank you for your support and the knowledge you do. So I know this isn't what we would normal, how we normally celebrate it, but in the pandemic, you just got to do what you got to do. Thank you.
Should I speak for a board when I say it's our, our pleasure, we're honored to do it? Okay, now, item 3.5, any other business? Probably not. Okay. Section four, treasurer's report, Ms. Paul.
Yes, I have two. I can speak tonight. 4.1, approval of a donation of $92 to the 3rd L L T O to be used towards the center garden. And item 4.2, approval of a donation of $150 for the Harrison Self-Driven Scholarship Fund, and you can see the list of donors.
Item 4.3 is the approval of items 4.1 and 4.2. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Superintendent's report?
Yes, policy 3220, a little housekeeping. This is really our new evaluation tool that we're required to get into policy. It's for hotels 2.0. Was delayed a year with the pandemic came on and should, it would have been online this year, but it's an adjustment. So it's a state mandated policy that we need to get in place. Actually, we are just getting started with our internal committee, working with our union to put that, that, all those pieces and educate ourselves. We're going to have to send a few teachers out that are on that committee, a couple of administrators as well. We might even sign up, so, so that we can be compliant. So I need approval for 3220. I actually forced reading, sorry.
Okay, we're moving to section six, assistant superintendent of administrative operations.
Yeah, that'll be me too. I got two, just our regular personnel report here. As you can see, just kind of a normal resignation, approval of, of the leave, as listed.
And the retirement, I just want to point out the retirement of Daphne Holmes. She's been here for 30 years. She's our year old supervisor. She'll be retiring November 31st, and she has just been such an amazing person, just the amount of knowledge that she has, it's going to be a huge loss for us, but I just want to congratulate her, she's a record, and she'll be very well missed.
Okay, section seven, assistant superintendent.
We need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
6.1, and then we need to do 6.2.
I'm sorry, yep. Okay, so item 6.1 is the approval of the personnel report. Second.
Second.
I have a question. So on the personnel report, I saw that we had a resignation of a bus driver to leave a basis with bus drivers. I need to know, we've always been, we've been so tight this year especially. How are we doing big picture with that specific?
Tight. Very tight, so.
Have we had to cancel any routes?
No, no. Talking on what? We have not had to do that, but now there have been some days where we have had our mechanics who are also certified drivers.
Right.
You know, fill in even our, our transportation supervisor, I think, once the place is done, so, wow. But again, we keep looking and we will continue to try to expand that as much as we can, but we knew this was coming, so we tried to plan for that. So fingers crossed and wishing them very best on their leave.
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Yes. And now item 6.2, this is the approval of our athletic report.
And need approval for items 1 through 20 on the athletic report. Just again, nothing unusual, most of them are spring sport assignments. Need approval for those.
Okay. Schedule. Oh, I'm sorry, question.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Section eight, director of special education.
No, it is me again. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I'm all of it.
Mr. President?
You're good, you're good.
I was getting off it up tonight.
Says my manager living in the city.
That's right. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm seeking approval for the Washington DC trip for our current seventh graders. This trip will begin on November 1st and go through November 4th of this year 2021. These are current seventh grader. I will bring information for you to our next meeting for our current eighth graders. So this is our current seventh graders for their eighth grade trip.
Thank you. That's good.
Second.
Schedule.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I need approval on the special ed contract adjustment. We are going to move towards Hamilton County ESC for this particular psychology services by, by doing this switch providers. It's about half the cost, so it's very good, good deal for us to do so. So we need approval for that selection.
It's replacing the maximum contract that the board approved earlier in the year and it's paid for restoration costs for it as well, but it is the same, it's about half of those previous contracts.
So it's the same amount of work that we're getting, like hours, because I thought 5.5 and E is just replacing how we ended that, I have a thinking.
Motion.
So move.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Section nine, this is board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, and future considerations. I think it probably best we hold our comments till after because we have a section 9.1, which is the approval of the resolution determining to proceed to levy an additional tax and excess of the technical limitation. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
I'm sorry. Anderson?
I'm watching, Mr..
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Yes.
I've either watched or been, been to a couple, a lot of games recently, like with hockey and the basketball, and I'm amazed at the talent that we have who sing the national anthem. I mean, especially, Jamie knows, at the hockey, the, the sound is the worst thing possible and the talent that these students bring and that they give up their night to do this. I just, it just kind of made me step back after hearing repeatedly, I think somebody shared one on Facebook, and I was like, we have amazing, amazing musical talent here. So I just wanted to notice that because, or to note that because so many times, you know, like, we're there to watch hockey, we're there to watch the basketball game or whatever, but I just think that the talent musically in our district is amazing also. Want to do a shout out to Daphne. She has consistently been an amazing support with the finance team, so I know she is going to be missed, but kudos to her for taking this season of her life. And Todd Smith, it's awesome to see you back around. I laugh because we did spend many hours on levy prep stuff, so thank you for being willing to serve. Your kiddos are not in the district and they're long gone, but you still love Springboro. I just appreciate you being willing to give that time once again. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you to the folks that, and the nation, and thank you, Mr. Hook.
Yeah, just thank you to the folks that made donations, and thank you, Mr. Hook, for the presentation. I know that was well laid out in terms of the PI levy, and just, yes, thank you to yourself, just to involve the folks that are involved, and it's gonna be a lot of work, obviously, so I just don't appreciate everybody that's willing to put in the time and energy and effort to, to come alongside us and to support us in this way, so thank you very much.
Thanks for the donations also. The presentation wasn't very good, and I think we as coaches need to figure out somehow through you to, you know, with all the kids that we have the ability to talk to and their parents to somehow get word to those people. I don't know how it can be done, but we've got, just in football, we've got 177th grader up through there, but, you know, have a good time.
Do you want to say anything about the board hockey coaches, how outstanding they are?
Sorry, I'm dressed, I have leave to go to Springfield, Ohio, for hockey practice. It's already late time, so...
I just wanna say, best wishes to Daphne. She's, she's been a wonder. Hard work. She would be missed, and always good to see Todd look a little older now than 25, 30. Anyway, so excited about this levy, we'll get it, we'll get it passed, and we'll be on the right track with all this, all the work we need to do in all these buildings, and I think, I think the parents and I think the community will, will support it, and I, and, you know, it's not every school district goes to the lengths to try to figure out how one thing drops off and one thing comes on. And even you alluded to that the next time, so I don't know how, how, how much more physically responsible you could be, and you always get better, but, but these kids do deserve more resources than they have, so... And, oh, I just, real quick, I just ran into a retail place in Cincinnati, it was Watson's, and I was, I was buying some things for the patio furniture, and the little girl that was waiting on me, I guess she noticed my address, she said, oh, you're from Springboro? And I said, yeah. She said, oh, I'm, I'm, I was from Springboro. So, I said, so did you go to school there? And she said, yes. And I said, so tell me how that experience was. She, she, I love when you catch people don't even know who they are, and they say, well, it was great. And she said, and she said, I, I actually moved there, I came from a small system, so to tell you the truth, I think, I thought it was great. I think sometimes a lot of Springboro kids are spoiled with what they have because they really kind of take it for granted. I was under the interesting comment, she said, I said, I couldn't believe it when I got there and all the resources that were available to me. So, but, but that's her perspective. On the other hand, there's so many more resources that Mason and all these other places have that our kids need, need to have too. But it's just a little life story, so...
Yeah, first, thank you again for the donations. Congratulations to Miss Holmes. I mean, 30 years is, you just don't care about that anymore, and, and, yeah, it's very, it's rare, so hopefully, we'll name the payroll department after her or something because I probably wasn't one before she got here. So, thank you to her, congratulations. And then finally, again, back to the levy, you know, again, I firmly believe it's the right thing to do. We're certainly not getting ahead of ourselves in terms of the ask. It's physically responsible, and I think one thing that I don't think was mentioned today, but we should probably note, is May 4th is not a real typical election day or a voting day, so I think it's gonna be very important for us to, to get our message out because there may be nothing else on the ballot except for us. So, you know, if it's a one-issue type deal, communication's gonna be absolutely critical. So, you know, like, like Mr. Stuckey said, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, because, you know, it's, word of mouth is gonna be important, social media is gonna be important, getting our story out there is gonna be important. But again, these are things that every district needs, every district needs busing, every district needs safety and security, you know, I mean, these are very run-of-the-mill things, but without them, you know, the educational experience goes down real fast. So, I think it's really important, but I'm happy we're at this point. I think we're gonna get this passed, so thank you.
I think with that, item 10.1, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Belajin?
Yes.
Thank you.